Hello hello Pradhanta Yesu Kunnamu Priyamagala Parshudravena Tanri Jivangala Yesu Kristu Prabha Marani Marpulintanri Sadaakalam Jivinchetunthuvara Neepadamulakondanamulu Stutulusdhotramlu Chelisuntunanu Imachana Samayavlo Tanri Sri Nungai Rithiga Koodrataaniki Mirumakechina Atvanti Sadaavokasam Korakaisdhotramlu Prabha Nayana Mari 36 Samatsaramlu Mari Tanri Nayana Mari Madhramyoka Aavimunndi Pativarukuda Deva Mirkaapaduchu Ochida Nikrupalanibattivandhanalu Anekamaina 24 portullo Patni Thattkodaniguda Shaktinistu Malappustochavnikstothramlu Naadeva Naaprabha Isamayavlo Mari Tanri Nayana Isantoshikaramaina 20 Samayavlo Mari Tanri Miru Mamalu Guda Paali Baagastulgache Strindukai Stotran Chelisunanu Deva Maaprabha Cheri Vachinatvanti Mamalantani Nyapuncheskuni Tanri Mari Maaprabham Neetha Asunidwaramaaku Anukrhinsavadutunatvanti Vartamamunu Pati Vandhananchelisunanu Mari Srila Kuda Mari Miru Vandinchetvanti Vaakiyunu Miru Maakusariga Saripoyevidanga Meemchakavatanki Mari Mamunmeem Saricheskodanki Maadeva Maaprabha Nayana Mari Adarinsavatanki Dairiparshavatanki Mayinlanumeem Kattkodanki Mirudaitupinsupani Pradhithisuntunanu Deva Maaprabha Intavarku Mamunkaapadina Deva Nayana Inkamida Teguda Mirkaapadtarane 20 Ayoka Nirikshana To Neepada Padmalachinta Cheri Mari Pradhithisuntunanu Tanri Yoka Saav Yoka Meeting Nanthatni Guda Mari Maaprabha Nayana Mi Yoka Groupgalasthalakappaginsukuntunanu Deva Suttukanchaveendhi Nikaapdhanalu Grahinchandi Prathivitamaina 20 Shetru Samahoomunnuchi Tanri Maunnu Prachchekaparachandi Vinidani Kichavulenu Grahinchitani K Chavulenu Maakuhurdayani Maak Anukrhinsupani Pradhithisuntunanu Deva Maaprabha Nayana Entaina Namadainaddevudoga Naama Jivitallo Miru Anukrhinsunatvanti Neepappaa Groupanubattini Kuvandhananchelisunanu Shashvathamaina 20 Groupato Mamunadarinschetvanti Devudugavundukai Neekay Kruthakyata Vandhanalu Chelinsukuntunanu Swami Nyapuncheskundi Daitupinsandi Maaprabha Nayana Vachinatvanti Pratipita Guda Potichethulto Otthikurdayamto Velakunda Deva Neenundi Kotapondipu Veladani Kisayinchandi Marumanseleeni Varu Marumansepondutani Kikrupasupinsandi Deva Maaprabha Marumansepondina 20 Varu Ujjivimpapattaku Miryesahayincheyvalsindigaduchuntunanu Yoka Koodikiladwarah Mevandharunkuda Tanri Purikulpobadi Niseva Paricharelo Tanri Paali Baagastulmaunatlu Daitupinsupani Pradhithisuntunanu Neevichinatvanti Akkeneme Vandharunkuda Siraasavohinsitani Kumaak Sahayinchandi Tanri Sarvalokavnakveli Sarvashrustrikina Suvarthanapragatinsamani Selavichav Ayoka Mari Theyumthote Meem 36 Samatsralakuda Mari Tanri Nadustuvastunam Deva Mir Naripistuvacharu Nikstothram Chelisunanu Deva Maaprabha Nyapuncheskuni Daitupinsandi Needayaakankaramuni Vasalatalantibatti Neekay Ganatha Mayapa Prabhaavlarupinsukuntu Tanri Anindasuniguda Abhishekinchivadukulmani Meempaadukunetvanti Paathalu Vaaketchanu Maakentho Asirvadukaranagundunatlu Sahayincheymani Yesunavano Pradhithincheyvedusuntunanu Paramatanri Aami Santoshi Mamata Karvada Sionukumari Rendikujuppaathalakasaayinchidanti Paathisankya Nalava Yokati Patlo Krotthaga Paathsunatvanti Paath Chala Andarkitsranga Untundhi Nalava Yokati Neenellapudu Yeovanu Sannotinchedanu Nichchemu Ayanakittinana Notanundun
Neenellapudu Yeovanu Sannotinchedanu Nichchemu Ayanakittinana Notanundun Neenellapudu Yeovanu Sannotinchedanu Nichchemu Ayanakittinana Notanundun Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Kannile Paanamulaina Kachina Dukka Badalaina Stitigathule Marina Avakashamchee Jarina Kannile Paanamulaina Kachina Dukka Badalaina Stitigathule Marina Avakashamchee Jarina Maradhu Yesu Prema Nichchudaina Tanri Prema 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 Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahananu Asdulannne Golpoyina Kannavare Kanuparugaina Upirere Paruvaina Gunvelere Pagilina Asdulannne Golpoyina Kannavare Kanuparugaina Upirere Paruvaina Gunvelere Pagilina Yeovaa Iichenu Yeovaa Biesukonenu Yeovaa Iichenu Yeovaa Biesukonenu Ayana Rama Munake Stutiikalukuaka Ayana Rama Munake Stutiikalukuaka Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahananu Avamadam Entaina Navare Kadanna Neevutappayavarunnaaru Akasha Mandhura Avamadam Entaina Navare Kadanna Neevutappayavarunnaaru Akasha Mandhura Neepunakundaga Eedina Kakkaraledu Neepunakundaga Eedina Kakkaraledu Neepunakundaga Eedina Kakkaraledu Neepunakundaga Eedina Kakkaraledu Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahanu Ashale Samadhyaina Vyadipaadaveluvaina Adikaram Koopukoni Raksanakay Anandhitu Ashale Samadhyaina Vyadipaadaveluvaina Adikaram Koopukoni Raksanakay Anandhitu Naadu Manasu Neenidha Aalu Konagamo Naadu Naadu Manasu Neenidha Aalu Konagamo Naadu Poonashanti Neepondhi Mennonakeetintun Poonashanti Neepondhi Mennonakeetintun Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahanu Sadhule Rakunna Othani Palaina Udyogamlekunna Gumikey Paruvaina Sadhule Rakunna Othani Palaina Udyogamlekunna Gumikey Paruvaina Naayadalani Talampulu Ento Priyamulu Naayadalani Talampulu Ento Priyamulu Neevutechinchinade Nichchalamu Khaneradu Neevutechinchinade Nichchalamu Khaneradu Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahanu Sangkalpana Pilupomli Ninne Praminchunaku Samastamu Samakooli Melukecharugunu Sangkalpana Pilupomli Ninne Praminchunaku Samastamu Samakooli Melukecharugunu Yesunee Swaru Priyamu Neenu Ponthalani Yesunee Swaru Priyamu Neenu Ponthalani Adamathinchinaai Vilugaina Siluvaakai Adamathinchinaai Vilugaina Siluvaakai Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahananu Neevucheyu Nadi Naakippudu Teelyadu Ika Meeta Taanenu Teresikundunu Neevucheyu Nadi Naakippudu Teelyadu Ika Meeta Taanenu Teresikundunu Prastutamu Samastamu Dukkaharame Prastutamu Samastamu Dukkaharame Apresinchina Neeti Samadana Fallame Apresinchina Neeti Samadana Fallame Antana Meluke Aaraganayesuke Antana Manchike Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Tana Chittamunaku Talavanchite Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Aaraganapanu Stutiinchutamahananu Stutiinchutamahanu
Song Number 30
Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu Lokashtulu Prasmitulu Mahiri Naathu Ye Borani Lokashtulu Prasmitulu Mahiri Naathu Ye Borani Kanashtu Kanashtu Dehana Raajaani Puttha inchedamu Dehana Raajaani Puttha inchedamu Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu Maharamu Yedkiyam Sada Paavnu Yedkedu Sada Paavnu Yedkedu Tane Varie Nano Ardunu Varini Yudkarichunu Tane Varie Nano Ardunu Varini Yudkarichunu Varichinchaya Nanu Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu Yesunee Sikkari Chedu Varigundu Yana Yesunee Sikkari Chedu Varigundu Yana Roni Karichu Varalu Nasintulu Nittamuga Roni Karichu Varalu Nasintulu Nittamuga Ramukya Mo Prashnayidhi Ramukya Mo Prashnayidhi Sionu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu Raju La Raju Ayane Prabhu La Prabhu Ayane Rasula Raju Ayane Prabhu La Prabhu Ayane Nayavantulu Ayane Mahankulaina Devulu Nayavantulu Ayane Mahankulaina Devulu Sadha Rajambayanate Ananda Munduri Sadha Rajambayanate Ananda Munduri Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Mi Tanu Shuddicheyudi Mi Raju Korake Sionu Raju Vachchunu Sionu Raju Vachchunu
Paathisankya Renduk Song Number 2
Stutiinchudie Ho Vaadevuni Surya Chendrulara Pavitra Duttaganaseenadi Patigi Stutiinchudie Ho Vaadevuni Surya Chendrulara Pavitra Duttaganaseenadi Patigi Mahasamutra Parvathaksham Mahasamutra Parvathaksham Oh Manu Stutiinchudie Stutiinchudie Ho Vaadevuni Surya Chendrulara Pavitra Duttaganaseenadi Patigi Rajalu Prajalu Niyadipatalu Adipatulara Rajalu Prajalu Niyadipatalu Adipatulara Galuru Yovana Khanyakavrutun Prabhu Munustutiinchudie Galuru Yovana Khanyakavrutun Prabhu Munustutiinchudie Prashinchudie Prabha Manimal Paramatanreini Sudin chudiee. Song number forty. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Enni baagalunna nu lippantu ledurainanu. Entha kastamochina mistura mainanu. Enni baagalunna nu lippantu ledurainanu. Entha kastamochina mistura mainanu. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Pratupunava pagillina kadali palainanu. Aralu munchi vesina aashalu anakarina. Pratupunava pagillina kadali palainanu. Aralu munchi vesina aashalu anakarina. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Astula nipoi na arogyam chini china. Astula niranainanu aragala vichilina. Astula nipoi na arogyam chini china. Astula niranainanu aragala vichilina. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni kuila lo ye diyu ledu asadhyamu. Ni tu kruppa to na ke miyu paavila samalamu. Ni kuila lo ye diyu ledu asadhyamu. Ni tu kruppa to na ke miyu paavila samalamu. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni maata chalaiya, ni chupu chalaiya. Ni todu chalaiya, ni needa chalaiya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya. Ni vunte naaku chalu yesaiya. Ni vente nee na vunta nee sayya.
Sohothirilandhariki sahayam seyavalsindhaka khor sunam. Maraiyukshari translationiko sohothiru vadaapshakeesavalsindhaka pradhistunam. Isimhaasramundi edaitemiru yoganen aasichara. Edi kuda miskaakunda. Pravasampuunamiga. Miri varike hoodiyamuna trumpthi saptruthi paruchunathiga. Mi vaakyamuna varike pooshisavalsindhaka khor sunam. Kritagnathal chaleistu. Pravanesikrisunam vada pradhinchidhi namustaveerikkunsunam tantray. Amen.
Praise the Lord.
Praise the Lord.
Because of food you are not speaking, you don't speak at all. When we say praise the Lord, why don't you also speak sir? Please speak it. Praise the Lord. Thank you very much, thank you. So loving sisters, I have not done like this. This is the first time I am meeting a women's meeting over here. I have not done it yet. But the Lord will be there.
Sohothiri, sohothiri kootamlo bodhinshtadi modhiti sarinaku, edinga epud jargalaidu. Nigandevan kruppu jupisthama.
So to start with, we will have Proverbs chapter fourteen verse one.
Samithalu padnalkajhayam modhiti vasumna aramisundam.
Yeah, please read it.
Gnanantaraalu tana illunu katchnu. Mudaraalu tana chesulato tana illu udaberkunu.
Every wise woman buildeth her house but the foolish plucketh it down with their hands.
Prathikna pradhansaskunam.
Loving only Father. Who has daily given us for our sins. For our sins he has given himself.
Pravamaa papumkaruku mieru, mimalu meera pukachkunam.
We adore thee and praise thee, oh Master.
Oh tantray mimalu aaradistu koniyadukuntam.
Unless until you have done this, we will not be a people.
Pravamaa, ee karame mirchaikunda ante mimalu kudundiyavaram ekadu.
So thank thee, we adore thee and praise thee, worship thee because that was done on the Calvary's cross.
A kalvarisilalu mieru chesnei valiyagumkai pravam lu sutistu koniyadutu slagistu pojichkuntam.
And today as we are gathered here for a meeting for us, dear sisters, please speak to us.
Pravasa hothiru madhilo edinga kootamga mimalu cherivatsnam daichisama vadaamartletindi.
Yes, unless until you speak, we have to go empty.
Pravam mieru martleti tapa mayata emileedanupkuntam.
So we look unto thee, the author and finisher of faith, so that he can be here and tell you your message.
Isvasamnu kartaayudanu konasaginchuvani esvayupu chuchuchutu pravamari vartamaramkaru keneepana adharaputthanam.
We bind the powers of darkness seen and unseen.
Marikana vadi, kana vadani andhakara shaktalano esnava bhandhisthama.
And ask all these things in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ.
Vannikuda pravanesikrisvariprashastamananavlo pradhinchivedukuntam tantray.
Amen. So the Lord has started like this.
Devudu edinga aramisunadu.
A wise woman really buildeth house.
Gnanantuvaru nizamuka tana illunu katchnu.
Yes, we have seen so many homes over there.
Anekamena illulu leka guruhamnavan justam.
It's like, we can say, a constituency.
Ah, constituency.
Yeah, a nation, nation's workplace.
Ok, amari deshamlo marai anekamari guruhal justam.
In our, in our India, we have Delhi, there we have this Bhavan.
Edinga Bharadeshamlo Delhilo edinga yiprabutvam justam.
There, all the people gather here, including our Prime Minister and other people, they decide and they work together for the betterment of India.
Edinga Bharadeshamu dani mailukaruku, dana yogukshamkaruku, pradharamantri, amari da mantrulandhariku chani vanna martladi, edinga katutalepada kapa parinaramistha.
The same way, Silone also has to do that.
Edinga pratyokkara aviddanga chalasunde.
But what has happened?
Kanen jerginante.
Lanka is reading door drums. Door drums, they are, they have failed, we can say.
Ah, ee vishamlo juste marai vifalamavutachar.
They are really, what we can say, they are not well, they are suffering.
Varu, varu, marai adeshamo ento marai sramalato ento badhabatthamdi.
Why the people who are just in charge, they don't do that.
Akaduna bajathragana aayaka prajalu avichalekpetachar.
They live for them.
Varu vichpetthachar.
Because they live for them. They are not able to take the Sri Lanka and go before.
Edinga Sri Lanka deshamnu munduku varu teeskunvalekpetachar.
But here, India, we have learned nothing, everything goes on well.
Kan Bharadeshamlo alandiparishutlamankaraalaidu, anne vada sakramanga jartunai.
That's the first verse of chapter fourteen of Proverbs chapter one.
Samithalu padnalkajhayam modhiti vasumna chadukunna avasnana kardamadi.
Yeah, the wise woman buildeth the house.
Gnanantaraalu tana illunu katchnu.
So today we will consider some important people, especially the women.
Edinam marai konchamandi pramukhamaina mukhyanga strelangujvaru justam.
And how they behaved, what all the things they have holden.
Varu yaka pravatna varu evindu chesvachar avishal justam.
And because of that, how that particular things have really developed.
Varu chesna aayaka parinabatti lekpete varu vaikhanabatti, ok visham evindu kattabartochindu lekpete, ee edinga falavantaga unda justam.
Women can be, not only men, women can be also work as people that is written over here in the Bible.
Deenu vaakyamlo marai purshilmaathame gapunda, streli guda anekamaina karyam chesaru, varu gunchigundanekamana urthanthalunna.
There are a number of prophets in, in the main thing, that is, we know that, all the people, that's why we consider.
Deenu vaakyamana anekam pro, prophets. Anekamada pravaktal gudunnae, pravaktal unnaru, varandharu gudamankatesu.
In female also, we consider some people over here.
Marai sahothirile gudakoni pravaktal unnaru, varu gunchikadu mankatesu.
First one is Exodus chapter fifteen verse twenty.
Churadi modhiti ga justam nirgamaakadamu padihena vajcham.
Exodus chapter fifteen verse twenty.
Irvaivachna, nirgamaakadam padihena vajcham, irvaivachnamu.
Who is that who is reading?
Ikada raya banna striyavaru.
I think you would have spotted. Miriam, yeah, that's good. Come on, go ahead and read, fifteen twenty.
Padihenu irvayavachna, mario aharonu sahothiryu pravaktiyu nagu miriamu, tamrunu chedapattukunenu. Strelandharu tamrunathunu naadshimathunu amevambadi vellega.
Do you know why, what is the reason what it is done?
Induku karanamaintodelsa tana evindu chedu karanamu?
Israel were there under Egyptians.
Israeel prajalu aigupthu deshamlo untavachar.
They were about forty thirty, four thirty years, they were slaves.
Varu nalvadhaluppa sansalalu bhanisalakantavachar.
Now by the intervention of the Lord and by the help of Moses, Lord was able to deliver them from Egypt. Now by the intervention of the Lord and by the help of Moses, Lord was able to deliver them from Egypt.
Varu devudu tanadaasudena moshayaka sahayam setha aiguptu deshamundi devudu vannu vedipinsnad.
They crossed the Red Sea.
Vera samothenu varu daatyar.
When, and they were before it see, they were really panicked.
Churandi samudramu daatak murupujuste ento bayandulaga, bahayamuchetan nipurtachar.
But the Lord made a big miracle.
Kan devadentoku patputamujesay.
He separated the sea.
Ah, samudramu devudu paayalijesay.
Not all we know that.
Yevanikuda manak telsu.
So in the 15th chapter when we read all these things.
Yevanivishalu padihinavajhamlo chadutathvara.
And especially, and it is said, about the Lord, it is said, he is fearful in prizes, doing wonders.
By deenu gurchni varu paruthu keetistu ayna, bhaingkaradana devuda adbutamlu cheyvadu, ani anekaman maatultha prabhu nu varu sthistu ochar.
In verse 11 we read it.
Padakunavachnum manandak telsa.
Lord glories in holiness, fearful in prizes and doing wonders.
Yehova velpilalono nivanti vadevadu, parashutathinabattenu mahaniyadavu, sthikirtanabatti poojadavu, adbutamlu cheyvadu, nivanti vadevadu.
Now to say about Lord Jesus Christ and the thing that has overcome, now Miriam takes the sister of her and took the timrel and she began to sing with trembles and dances.
Yedanga tarata aharoniaka sahodai miriyamu, pravaktiyaka miriyamu, tanu tammurajeta pattkuni naathshyamadhaasundhi.
So what we understand is this.
Deenu batthamaanu eed ardhansheskugala.
Miriam took over.
Ikada mar, mar, miriyamu tammurajeta pattkuni.
And she has begun to convey, convey what the news that has been done.
Akad jarga badina vasthamu leka akaaruvanu tanu teliputhaasundhi.
I usually call wives as the home ministers.
Churandi samaninga home minister, leka intlo una gruham, mantrulaku manam chala telvigalavanuntam.
The man is the prime minister.
Churandi prime minister pradharamatri antaru.
And more, and we can say, our sisters, that is wives, they are really home ministers.
Sahodariliki home ministeranu guda jeptha antaramaro maatalo.
And mostly if you see it in any place.
Samaninga anekamasthalarman jusnapudu.
The home minister what is said is done.
Churandi home minister unnavalu.
It is done.
It is done.
What sir, why you don't that, you don't want it eh? Hmm? Yeah, mostly, mostly because she is the one who cares the home.
Churandi intloguda varu untena unesthalepthena adharanmaat.
So he is the one, she is the one who cares for it and that's why I say, mostly, mostly in the terms of home, she is a master over there.
Mar intlo jergi prati panlaku leka anekamana vishalaku sahodariye, anni vishallo maripradhana thavanchitigansha pagalam.
She must be like a Miriam.
Churandi Miriamale tanu patra vhesthun.
One more woman we can think of is Deborah.
Indi okka strelingujma maatlayatknappudu, amperu Deborah.
Judges chapter 4 verse 4.
Nyayidipathalu nalgavajhamu nalagavatsunam.
Judges chapter 4.
Nyayidipathalu.
Verse 4.
Naalgavajhamu nalagavatsunam.
Yeah, please read, 4:4.
Naalvi naalvi. Akaalamuna lappidhotunaku bharayaena Deborah anu pravakti, Israelulako nyayidipathiga unnenu.
It's not party, hmm? Yeah, 4:4.
Yeah.
And Deborah, a prophetess, the wife of Lepita, she judged Israel at that time. You know what Deborah was doing?
Ikada Deborah ain jesunnante.
And Israel had Doordrums at that time.
Adhinaaloo Israelaku nyayidipathiga anto achsini.
And they were under these people, then the man who is against them, he was coming and destroying the people of Israel.
Israel prajalu okve, a, a, yabinanavikti cheta varu, maribandalo iruklo unnapudu.
You know the man Sisera?
Sister?
Sisera.
Sesera, sesera.
Sisera is the man who is behind it.
Varu yekka viktilenkalu unnavikti sesera namat.
Now, what have to do, Israel is very, we are there in Doordrums, we are there in panic.
Ipudu Israel prajalu ento kattinamaina bhadalukundaavitu bhaiportachar.
And Deborah took over.
Ip, ikada Deborah tanu mundugileshtochindi.
She was with Barak.
Ah, Barakthapatu.
And what is then?
Alinejesaru.
You all know the story.
Meandarko urthathanndesu.
That is when he went over, this Sisera was defeated, he went over and when, when they were there, then this one, Deborah was really asked him to come in, he gave the milk, then when he was lying, he really pissed and really nailed over his head.
Mari Deborah, mar, akada ami marichet, munduku, a, ayaika mundukvelisuvu Sisera no odinchii, tanu maridevunik mahima dachitigantundi.
And you know the story, then how they celebrated that, you know that.
Varu vijayapodhunata anta, anta santoshamto, varu jayavasamutavu, antavach, sariyantavak telsu.
So what we can understand is this.
Ikada manavim ardhanshesthukalamante.
Women can also do the work of prophets.
Maripravakta ane pani, leka pravaktiyaka panulos streli gudachsegalaru.
What is actually prophecy?
Vastavanki pravachnamante enti.
See in colloquial terms they say, especially the people who are saying, who says about the future, they say he is the prophet.
Yevareite okaviktiyaka baushathinugurchi jeptharo, a viktiya pravakta ga billista.
But actually it is not the case.
Kan yadi vastavan kadigadu.
Can you tell me who is the prophet?
Miravaranu jepakala, pravakta ante yavaro.
Can you please tell me?
Yevaranu jepakala.
What's saying? What I don't understand in tailu, if you take in English I can understand you.
Some are telling mediator between God and man.
mediator?
Between God.
mediator? Yeah, one way it's okay, otherwise?
Kontavarku vastamai?
Hmm, otherwise? Gods? Yeah, that's what I am asking, what is the prophecy, that's what I am asking. She is prophesying, okay, what is the prophecy? What do you mean by prophecy? Not telling about the future because there are so many people who read the pawns and they say, yo, you'll be like that and these people going on nodding as a bull, then after it comes paying money, that's not that.
Churandi pravachnamante, edo mundu jarga bae vishamkada, manak chala jasthatam, a, ayaika jyotishin jepheyvar.
So kindly read with me to chapter 19 of Revelation.
Chutam sadavandam, prakitankandam pantumidajhayam.
And verse 10 later part.
Padavajham, na reka rando bhagam javatam.
Revelation 19:10 later part.
Prakitankandam pantumidajhayam, padavatsnumu rando bhagam.
For the testimony of Jesus is a spirit of prophecy.
Esunugurchina sakshamu chappu ni sahodarlanu.
Where, that Bible says that, no?
Deenu vaakhyamno chasstang raibaddindi.
What is prophecy?
Pravachnamante enti?
What you tell about Lord Jesus Christ is the prophecy.
Esukrisupravagarnsini yedaita chapatavo, adhe pravachnam.
So testimony, you are giving light what Lord Jesus has done, so you go on saying about Lord Jesus, that is prophecy, that's what it said here.
Ikada raibunna maatprakaranjuste, esu pravargurchina chappu, prati maata guda, adhe pravachna ansaramani, adhe pravachnamu.
So what our dear sisters have to do then?
Aitevut sahodarli enjali?
To be a prophetess?
Okka pravaktiga unnalanante enjali?
You must know the Bible well.
Devnu vaakhyamnu bhaguka telsundali.
Because we have more time in your home.
Amikadintlo ekko samayam vikuntundi.
You have time to read also.
Deenu vaakhyam sadavang samayam kaliguntaru.
Read the Bible, memorize the Bible, teach the children what they need it.
Devunika, mana biddaluke eda ausramo dani manamo, varik neerpinsali.
In the time of Israel it happened like that.
Israel prajalu varadicheshtu ochar.
Yeah, the, in almost Israel we can understand, these children, they were called, that women were called kind, kind means la cow, because that is fact that is said, that means they are not doing their duty and they are not teaching the children, the children, they should have come up like that. Sorry, I am going on, please go.
That's okay, so it, I can repeat the first sentence?
Yeah, in almost chapter 4 we read like this.
Amos nalgavatsamla yedanga raibaddindi.
That is, they, these people, this, they, he mentions, almost mentions the women as kind.
Akada, amari streligurcha amosrastu ento dayakalignavaran, streligurcha prastavichnad.
Kind is the female name of the bull.
Ah, mar, bull, marika.
Bull is a master word.
Churandi.
That is female male word.
Mar.
In, in their mind that, that bull, bull and that, what you say kind, it is mentioned as male and female.
Stree purshilga, amari ayaika prastavanlo, vaadavanna maatuntundi.
So what he says is this.
Ikada enjap, chappavatnante.
This kind did not care about the children.
Yee okka, ikada raibadna strelinguji, adhe pillaligurchi patimpu, pattinskunaleidu.
They were about their own selves, how to beautify themselves, how we can come out, you know in these times we have that how many clubs and there, companies and there, you go there, you call as a president, I am the president some so and so, that you say that, but you leave your children over there.
Kanipillaligurchi varu pattinskokunda, maria ayaika savandhirugurchi varu ekoga, shadajupiya vara evunchinarani, akada raibadthatsindi.
So you have to very careful.
Manamintu jagruthakundali.
Because you are the home minister, you have to charge, care the children, you have to bring up the children in the nurture of the Lord.
Mari miri intiki vastavanki adhipatilguntara, avati pillalu neerpinchavishamlo, varipenchavishamlo, miri jagruthavansali.
Secondly, you can be a partible in the church.
Rando diga, mandinamlo leka sangamlo guda miru sahakaralguntar.
You can ask me this question.
Miru prashnameyichu.
Usually male, that is our brothers are only working there in the church.
Marisangamlo vastavam juste sahodarilu, purshilaga panjhestharu.
But he have a work also.
Meekuda panundi.
You have to take part in the church.
Sangam bharamlo guda mir palpupul kaligundots.
What all you can do as a woman, you can do that.
Amarisahodarilaga miri eyevi chegalaru, abani guda chedanki vilundi.
Kindly turn with me, Acts chapter 18 verse 26.
Apostolikaram padhinavajham irvaivaa rovsun justam.
Acts chapter 18 verse 26.
Apostolikaram padhinavidi irvayaa.
18:26.
Priskilla akulayu vini, athanich chertsukuni, devuni margamu, maripoorthiga athaniki vishida parachiri.
See, you know what is the story?
Ikada telsugama manaku, kata.
And there is, there was a man called Apollos.
Akad Apollanaku viktimnadu.
He, he was born there in Alexandria, that's what 20 verse, 20 verse says.
Iruvnalgavatsmalu Alexandria lo aynapuchinavadu kavati, aynapallo.
And in this man, he is really a good man, he is very jealous for the Lord.
Yee okka vikti devunikaruki ento rosham galiginavadu, chala manshi vikti guda.
But what has happened here?
Kan ikada enjerginante?
He, he knew something only, according to the word, he knew something of the Lord but in most of things he didn't know about it.
Athaniki devunigurchi, a, a, anekamani shal teleedu, kanikonta marku vaat, maathrame tanu telskunnadu.
Here we see our sister Priscilla.
Ikada Priskilla marisahodarin jasthunam.
What, what she did?
A sahodarin jesindi?
She heard about him.
A viktin gurchi telsukuni.
And they took him into them and exhumed unto him the way of God more perfectly.
A vikti ni devuni margamu maripoorthiga vivarichnad.
When you can do this.
Adhe mir chegaladu.
When you are really well versed in the word of God, you can do that.
Ipanni mir epud chegalarante, devuni vaakhyamandu bhaguka avagana kaligundi, epud chegal.
Sorry, Apollos, no, he is a good man but not well founded in word, so that's why this Priscilla has to go and teach him the word of God.
Apollo a vikti mansiwade, kanid devuni vaakhyamnu lothiga anubhuma lenivadu, andike yee okka Priskilla, akada tanuku deenu vaakhyamnu marilothiga vishida parastavichindi.
How this woman Priscilla was preaching?
Ee vidanga Priskilla bodhistochindi?
Because she read the Bible, she was well versed with the Bible, she was obeying the Bible, she was acting on the Bible, that's why she is able to teach Apollos.
Amari Apollo ku tanu ee vidanga bodincha galitochindante, mattamattiga tanu devuni vaakhyamadu lothiga avagana galigina streega undindi, devun vaakhyamandu bhaga pattinsina streega undindi kavati, tanu chappagaligathochindi.
One more, one more is Roman chapter 16.
Churani inkod justam Romylasnapathriya padaharu vajhamu.
16:1 and 2.
Madhiti rando vatsnal. Romylasnapathrika padaharu madhiti rando vatsnal.
I come unto Phoebe our sister, which is a servant of the church, which is at Kenkara, that he receive her in the Lord as become saints and that he assist her in whatsoever business she hath need of you, for she hath been a succor of many and myself also.
Kenkriyelo unnasangaparicharakulagu Phoebe anu mana sahodarini, parashudalaku taginatuga prabhu nanthu chertsukuni, ameku meevalana kavasina deeda inavunnedela, sahayamusevanani, amenigurchi meeku sifarschachisunano, ame anekulano, nakunno, sahayaku raalainunne.
What is said about Phoebe now?
Phoebe gurshika raibana enmaatal judani?
What she is doing?
Tanen jesunnante? Tanen jesindi ikada?
Anybody?
Chapdavari?
What she is doing, what Phoebe was doing?
Phoebe kapani enti?
No. I don't hear you. I don't hear you.
Ami maatal vinavatklevu, kattik jepandi?
What Phoebe was doing?
Phoebe ikada enjesundhi? She is doing ministry, ministry serving.
Pardon? God service she was doing, yes, that's it.
Ante, devuri parichari jes.
She was really, you know, it is said, it is said, which is a servant of church in Kenkara.
Ikada Kenkara annasangaparicharaku raalagu anraibadu.
It is said he received the saints.
Parashudalano tanu chertsukundi.
So many people come to your house.
Anekamani manitikavustavuntar.
So many gods come to your church.
Daviseyugulu manitikavustavuntar.
How far you are, you are there, fulfilling your, your duty over there.
Entavaraku mana karathavyamunu manam nirvahisthunam aapansam.
Here we see Phoebe, come on, going on, caring about the saints, caring about the people who are coming over there in the church, she was working.
Churandi sangamlo tanuka paricharaku raalagavundi, tanintikavose parashudalan chertsukuntu, varigundu pattinskuntuna streega undi.
She is not doing, why you come, why this man has come, why I had to do it, she didn't ask like that.
Enduku yevikti ocharu, enduku vilandari epud ocharu, neeni manichayenu, yedanga visukure streega leidu.
And it is said, it is, she has been a succor of many, of myself also, that's what Paul, apostle Paul is saying.
Apostolic Paul anto amegurchnisna sakshamnante, anekalaku sahayaku raalainu, nakunno sahayaku raalainu.
Yes, she is a really home minister who cared for the people that came to house.
Tanintikavose parashudalano amechertsukuni, athitichchavishlam nizamuka ameko home minister lanav.
So it is very essential that you have to care people who are coming to your house or the church.
Devuniyaka sangabedal manitikavostnapudu varigurchi manamu, pattinskudamu, leka varigurchi jagruthavanshunam ento pramukhamaina vishal.
You must be involved in the church.
Ide sangamyoka paricharalo bhagam kaligunduta.
Whatever it is done to, given to you, you have to do that.
A, a, paricharalu meekarmatincha budthochinavatni mir chedam.
If you can't do it, you can ask people, you can help people, you can really succor people who are daily doing that.
Amirokavela chelakepote, ilanti paricharali yavarchesnaru, varik sahakaranshamu, lekpete varidagaramari neechkudamu guda adhu tamamayinadi.
Thirdly.
Madhiga.
You must be a woman of constancy.
Conscient.
Conscency, con, doing everything in the right way.
Amiro elanti streega unnalanante, pratyokati chakga, krammuga, okka padthati lo chesistreega unnal.
Ruth chapter 1 verse 16.
Lukaswartha madhitesam padaharu vatsnum.
Ruth, Ruth.
Shaminchali, ruth grandamo.
Chapter 1 verse 16.
Madhitesam padaharu, ruth grandamo, madhitesam padaharu vats.
You know about this sister.
Ikada raibunna sahodari meru mbaag telsu.
There is only four chapters here in the Bible.
Igrandamlo nalgi nalga vajhal unnae.
But when you consider Ruth.
Kaniruthini gurchni manam alachinsinapudu.
Even in my earlier days, I have really looked unto her and have been revolved in the Lord.
Aneka pariyam neem guda, yegrandam chadu, entagano atminga, mailupantochar.
You know the family, that what has happened?
Ikada telsnu, mi kutummom, ikavakutummomundi, varik en samavichidu manak telsu.
Our dear Naomi goes there, she becomes a widow and the children, and that sons, daughter, sons also died over there, so she comes back with the daughter-in-laws.
Yedanga Naomi tanu maribetlemundi, marivitsi, tanu ayaika veeradeshamu veladamu, marakannansi, moyamnansi, tanu bartanukolipoyi, tharipukumarlagunipoyi, viduraliga tirigaravadamu, kodallin ventabetkunradamu manak telsu.
Naomi says to, said to both of them.
Ipudu idhar kodallatho Naomi jepthundhi.
What happened?
Enjergindi?
Yeah, it is said Orfa and Ruth.
Ikada idhar kodallu, Orfa, Ruth idharunna.
When Naomi asked them, you please go back.
Mar tirigemiro daicheshvelipunani Naomi idharu jeppinapudu.
It is verse 14, it is said Orfa kissed her mother-in-law and went back.
Mari Orfa, maritanaika attanu umuthubetkuni velipoyidhan raibadun.
But what about Ruth?
Kaniruthu vishamaste?
Ruth claved unto her.
Tanayaka attanu hatukundi Ruth.
I am not able to understand this.
Ili nakus ardhangaaladu vastavan.
Don't be, whatever I say, please be sorry for that.
Anenu chappavisham kocham nochkavadana manajesthna.
I know many families.
Aneka kutummalag tels.
In that.
Akutummalo.
The two never got as a rail in the train.
Maripat, a, a, okka, okka train yedanga rando pattalamida samananga velthundo, a yedanga samananga velar.
Yes, most of the families.
Chala kutummalunnae.
The mother-in-law doesn't allow the daughter-in-law.
Mar attha kodallu enmatram anavatinsadu.
Go on, going on, going on, going on, I don't know same man.
A, yedanga aneka kutummalajustochchano, aneka pariyamli samasal untavuntai.
Sometimes the reverse also happens.
Konisalu daniki paray, vetirekam guda jartunam.
Daughter-in-law has a power over hand and she goes on tramping, I must say that, tramping the mother-in-law.
Konisalu kodallaki enta shaktuntundante, enta adikaramuntundante, attanu anichivese shakti adikaramugavalkuntundi.
I have seen many families like that.
Ilanti koni kutummalaj jusar.
I don't know about you.
Me vishamnaak teli.
If you are a mother-in-law or if you are a daughter-in-law.
Okavela mir attha gavundatsu, kodag, kodall gavundatsu.
Are you like that?
Kan mir aavdangunnaara?
If you are like that.
Okavela aavdangundate.
You are no part in Lord Jesus Christ.
Esukrisupravarparicharalu meekematthu, part, pa, paal leidu.
Yes, we can't.
Manan chailaimi guda.
You can't be a, I can even say you can't be a saved person.
Amari nizamuka rakshinsapatna vara, annadanu guda okka prashnaasundhi.
Yeah, the Bible teaches forgiveness.
Devnu vaakhyamu, shamaapananugurshamak neerpisthundhi.
Case, no question of forgiveness.
इकड़ा मारी ई रण्डु विषयलो जिस्तनाम, इकड़ा शमापनकु तावेलेद.
But I don't know why it's happened like that.
मारी एन्दुका एविदंग जरुतुंदो नाकैत अर्धंगा.
I tell about this, a real story I won't say.
आ मारी जर्गिन ओका वास्तवान कथन मी जप्ता.
One of the brothers there in Coimbatore.
अकोइमत्रिन लोक सहोदरिन्नाय.
And he, he, he has a daughter.
आ तानुको कुमार्ते अंदी.
And his daughter was married here to Anandra only, I don't want to mention the name.
मारी पेयर जपड़मिस्तो लेदो, आंद्रलोनी आत्तनु कुमार्तकु विवाहन जर्गिनी.
Do you know what the mother-in-law did?
आत्ता इन्जेस्सन देल्सा?
She didn't give any food for her.
आ सहोदरिकी तिनिनारक सरिगा बोजन गुड़ा बेट्ले.
That was then, it came, the report came like that to us only.
अलांटी वार्तालो मनक विनवट्टोचिन्दा.
And more that, she was conceived also.
मारी वास्तवान जिससे आ सहोदरी गर्बवितिगा उठ्टोचिन्दी.
Even at that time, the mother was so cruel, she didn't give food to her.
अलांटी शरमलो गुड़ा, समयमलो गुड़ा, आत्ता एन्तो मारी कठिनंगा उठ्ने तानु सरिबोजन.
Still she goes to church.
आइनपट्टीकी तानु मंदिरान्कल्त.
Oh, worship the Lord.
प्रभुनारा देस्सन्दी.
Take part in the table.
बललो पालपम्पल कलिगुंडी.
How dare she takes it, I don't know.
मारी एन्ता दैरंगावालो नाकैत देलीद.
She does it, she does it. She, that mother-in-law does it.
आविदंगा आत्ता चेस्तोचिन्दी.
We can also have the daughter-in-law, so will they let us leave it?
आ मनकुड़ा कोडल उठ्तारु, मन नारु जिस्ना जप्पट्लेदु.
Here we are concerning about Sister Ruth.
इकड़ा रूथ अन्न सहोदरिनी गुर्ची माट्टार.
Ruth chapter one, verse sixteen.
मदित्य जाम पदहार वज्ञनमलो.
And Ruth said, entreat not me to leave thee, or to return from falling after thee, for without the ghost I will go, whether thou loth it, I will loathe, thy people shall be my people, and thy God my God.
अंदुकु रूथु नावेम्बडी रावदनियो, नानु विड्सी पेटवदनियो, नानु बर्तिमला आलुकुनवद्दु, नीव वेल्लुसोटके एनेन वच्छदनु, नीव निवसिंचिसोटने एनेन निवसिंचदनु, नी जनमे नाजनमु, नी देवुडे नादेवुडु.
So what Ruth says, what a, what a word he says.
छुरनी रूथ जप्पे माटल एन्ता रम्यंगा उन्नाय.
She didn't know Lord Jesus Christ.
रूथुकु प्रभु अंटेस देवुडंटे देलीद.
At that time, the Lord the Father also, she didn't know that.
आस्तमेमलो ईहो आदेवुड कुड़ा, यूरुथुकंदिगा देलीद.
As a woman, she does the work.
छुरनी ओका स्त्रीगा सेवल्सना करत्तव्यमुनु तानु निर्वहिस्तन.
She's telling to the mother-in-law.
आत्तातो तानु जप्तुन माटलु.
Don't tell me to go.
नानु विड्सी वेल्लावालनी चप्पोवद्दु.
Don't say that I should not follow you.
आ निन्नु वेम्बडिंसान, वेम्बडिंसोदने माटल जप्प.
I'll, I'll go where you go.
आनु एकड़िके वेल्ट एकड़िकल्त.
Most of that, that other one is that thy God is my God.
आ मारी नी जनमे नाजनमु, नी देवुडे नादेवु.
Naomi also, we see, we are no time that we say, Naomi also, after some time she says.
कोण, मारी कोणत कालन सानता नायमी गुड़ा तान अंटुन्ना माटल एच्चिन्टे.
I have to, I have to see your goodness, so she planned about it, you know about it, all the stories you know about boys and all, you know that.
मारी नायमी गुड़ा, यूरुथ योक्ष्यमु तानु मेलुपन्तालनी योचिन, योचना कलितोचिन्दी, बॉय आजु कथल एन्ता तरतम मनक देल्स.
But this words I really like it.
कानी इकड़ा रायबुन्न माटल नाक चाला इस्तमु.
Yeah, chapter four.
नाल वज्ञायम रूथ कुड़ा.
Ruth chapter four.
नाल वज्ञायमो.
And verse thirteen and fourteen.
पदमुडु, पदनाल वज्ञन, रूथ कुड़ा नालु पदमुडु, पदनाल.
Read please.
एफ्रातालो नी ओक्ष्यमाबिरुथि कलिगिनावाड़वाई, बेत्लेहेमुलो नी ओक्षातिनोदु दुबगाका, ईहो ई यवनरालिवनन नानीकु दायज्यू, संतानमुनु, नी कुटुम्मुनु, तामरु युद्धाकु, कनिना पेरेसु कुटुम्मुवलेनुनु गाकानेरी.
This was fifteen.
पति अन्वश्नु.
And he shall, sorry, go ahead.
निन्नु प्रेमिंची एडगुरु कुमारले कंटे, नीक एक्कुवगाननु, नीक कोडलन ईतन्ने राकनेनु, ईतरु नी प्राणमुनु दार्ची, मुसलितनमुनु नीको पोश्चकुड़मगुन्ने नायमुत चप्पेरी.
Know who's the son of Ruth?
छुरनी रूथ योका कुमारिड़ एवड़ु?
It is written in verse seventeen.
पति अन्वश्नु रायबड़नी.
He is the father of Jesse, the father of David, his name is Jesse.
आ मन यतन पेयर एश, एशाई.
One more thing I want to say.
इन्को विषम मीक चप्पा लांकुनान.
In the genealogy of Lord Jesus Christ.
एसुक्रिसु प्रविक वम्शावलीलो.
It's, she's also coming there.
ई रूथ पेयर गुड़ा रायबड़द्दी.
Matthew chapter one.
मत्ता ईस्वार्थम मदित्य जामो.
Verse five.
आई दोच्छ.
And Solomon begat boys of Rahab, and boys begat Obed of Ruth, and Obed begat Jesse.
नायसोन शल्मानु कनेनु, शल्मानु रहाहबुनंदु, बॉयजुनु कनेनु, बॉयजु रूथनंदु, ओबेदुनु कनेनु.
So what we understand is this.
इकड़ा मनक एन्न अर्धंग जस्कुगलमंति.
If you are true to the Lord.
देवुनिकी नु एदाहर्धंगुंटे.
She has, what a thing Lord has done.
छुरनी एन्ता गोप्पा कार्यमु रूथ रंदु देवुड जेसे.
In the genealogy of Lord Jesus Christ, Sister Ruth is coming over there.
एसुक्रिसु प्रविक वम्शावलीलो सहोदरी रूथ पेयर गन्नबड्दु.
Because of what quality that she exhibited.
छुरनी तानु कनपरिचिना गुणमुनु बट्टी, योका आदिकेता तानु बंदुकुंतोचिन्दी.
She was a moabite.
छुरनी वास्तवान की मोयाबिराल.
But when he made, when she met Naomi.
कानी नायोमीनी कल्सुकुन तरवत.
She could understand the God of Jesse.
आ मारी एशाई देवुड योका, इसरायल देवुनी तानु तेल्सुकुटाउच.
And she is going with the God of Naomi.
आ नायोमी देवुनी वेम्बडी, तानु वेल्ताव्च.
And that's why Lord made him, made her to give birth to Obed, the father-in-law, sorry, the grand, grand, sorry, the grandfather of our Mr. David.
अंदिके देवुड़ रूथके एन्ता कनिक्रमु क्रूप जुपिच्चांटे, रूथनंदु ओबेदु, मारी ओबेदुनु कनेन तरवता, ओबेद योरंटे, मारी दाविद्राज्यक्का, मारी तातानुकुंडी.
What Sister Ruth is teaching to me?
आ मारी इप्पुडु रूथ सहोदरी मनक एम बोधिस्तन्दी.
What she won't say?
आ तानु जप, तानु एम इच, कादन जप्पट्लेदु.
You must be strong.
आ बलमु कलिगी धैर्यंगलिगुंडाली.
A man, sorry, a woman must be very strong in the faith.
विस्वासमुनंदु स्त्री चाला धैर्यंगा बलमंत्रालगुंडाल.
Even though she is young.
छुरनी यंग.
Even though she was young.
छुरनी आ सहोदरी एन्ता यवनान, यवनस्राल गुन्नपट्टीकी.
As Boas said, you didn't go after my young ones.
आ मारी यवन, मारी चिन्न, नु वेरेपलमलो निक वेलकुड़दन चप्पन माटलु.
And when she obeyed Naomi.
नायोमी माटलकु विदेजुपिच्छना स्त्री.
Boys came as a husband.
एविदंगा बॉयजु तानकु बर्त्तगाउंटोचिन्दी.
And because of that, Obed was born.
वारी ईरुनु बट्टी ओबेदु पुचिन्नार.
He is coming in the genealogy of Lord Jesus Christ.
एसुक्रिसु प्रविक वम्शावलीलो चेच्छबट्टा.
That means a woman has to be consistent.
दन अर्थमिंटंटे, ओका स्त्री, अन्नी विषयमलो मारी सर्यैना आलोचनगलिगी, आलोच, सनैयन विदानुनु नड़वाली.
Consistent in the Lord.
प्रभुनंदु मारी तानु, मारी एडत्तेककुंडाली.
Concern the word of God.
देवुनी वाक्यमंदु एडत्तेककुंडाली.
And consistent the church.
संगमलो गुड़ा ओके रखमुगुंडाली.
Consistent the Lord the Father.
देवुनी अमर तंडी विषयमलो गुड़ा अदेव्यदमुंडाली.
It is expected a woman more, more and more, more by the Lord.
एविदंगा इलांटी सहोदरलु उड़ाननी देवुड़ एक्कुवा कोरुकुंचनान.
Then we find these women are sacrificing women.
आ दन तरवता, मारी अर्प्पणमु लेका सनमपड़े सहोदरिन जिस्ताम.
By that you can understand who is that.
आ दानु बट्टी मीक अर्धंग जस्कुगलरु योरनी.
Please tell me.
चप्पणी, योर.
Who is that, who has done sacrifice her?
योरु मारी, अर्प्पिच्छुकार्न तनतान, सरिगैप्पा.
Pardon? Yes, sir, you are right.
करेक्ट सरिगैप्पा.
Yeah, kindly read, yesterday, chapter four, verse sixteen.
ईस्तर अन्वश्नु नाल वज्ञायम पदहार वज्ञनम.
Yesterday, chapter four, verse sixteen.
ईस्तेरु नालु पदहार.
See what they done, doing, sixteen, I'll read it, go, gather together all the Jews that are present in Shuson, and fast for me, and, and neither, neither eat nor drink three days, night and day. neither eat nor drink three days night and day. I also, my, I also and my maidens will fast likewise and so will I go unto the king, which is not according to the law and if I perish, I perish.
Neupoyi shushananduka nabadina yudhalandarni samajamandaramuloniki sama kurchi, naanimitam upavasamudi moorudinamulu annapalamu chayekundidi. Neenu nu na panikataluku gada upavasamundamo. Pravechinshta niyayavetriyekamugavano nanu, neenu rajananduku pravechinchudenu, neenu nasinchina nasinchedenu.
You know the story.
Meekandarki katant dels.
Yesterday how she came as a queen over there.
Yesterday evidega rani ga marchabaduthochinamigals.
Because King Agas vanished this vasti.
Yoka mari ashvaroshu mari vastini dinch, dinchesinappudu.
And yesterday came down.
Mari vasti dikiipoinappudu.
And we know that Haman is there.
Manak delsu Haman gada unnadakada.
And because he disliked Motekai, he disliked you also.
Hamanuku Motekayanna yudhalante asahayemo.
So he wanted to kill.
Varandani samharinsalankundadu.
So he got the order from the king.
Rajdekanansi ayana mari patrikaldiskochinadu.
And the order was sent, and the order was sent, you all know that.
Uh, idanani gada manak delsu aagnajari jaybadhavachin.
Suppose if you are in the place of yesterday, what would they have done?
Vashtavaniki ester stanamlo manameyunti enchesstam.
Anybody?
Evanani chapandi.
What would they have done?
Meeru enchesivande var.
Suppose you are in the position of yesterday, what would they have done?
Okavela esteru neene ankunni meere ankunti emi chesevande var.
Nobody will do that, eh? Anybody?
Evanani chapandi enchesivande.
Let me, let me know that what's the women's life.
Mari sahodari emankuntinara naktelialgavati.
Pardon, pardon? You will pray? Yeah, that's what yesterday is doing, eh, she will pray. What are the things you will do that? Not more than that.
Pradhana kaakunti inkayemi seegalam.
It's not only praying.
Ikada pradhana okitega.
She had to sacrifice herself.
Tanuku taanu arpiniskudanak sitapadin.
Do you know why, why it is, you know that?
Meek delsu endukiyavandanga raivadindante.
When a husband there in the courtroom.
Chunandi bartha ayaka mari simhasanvidanappudu.
So when he is in the throne.
Simhasanasi nega, simhasamudukochinappu raju.
Nobody can go inside that room.
Ayaka gadiloni kilaka ayaka simha, ayaka atan degariki neeruka evan pravechinsalere.
Until otherwise the king invasions.
Raju pilistegani ahamanistegani evan gada velakududu.
So he may or he may not.
Mari ayana pillavatsu pillokupots.
So if he doesn't know women's.
Okavela pillavaledankundi.
That person will be taken and killed.
Okavela pillokunda velipote avektini champaveshta.
That is the day, that was, that was the thing that was happening on that day.
Adinalu alanti katinamana chattnamu undedanamati.
No, when Motekai says, "Order is done, order has been passed to kill all the Jews."
Mari yudhalandani champivelaanna aagnajari jaybadinani Motekay chepinappudu.
Now she is sending this word.
Ipudu esteru malthtramati.
What she, yes, she is fasting as her sister said, she was fasting and praying.
Onu vashtavaniki tanatupattuna chelikatalitoleka mari sahodarito kalsi upavasinga pradanjesindi.
How many days he was fasting?
Anidinalu.
Three days, three nights and days.
Mooor pagalu raatri.
That's what I am asking.
Adiyadiganu mitati.
What will you in the place of yesterday?
Ester stanamonti meere enchesivande var.
See how daring, daringly she was doing.
Chuni anta dhairamuto sahasinchijesina karim.
How did she get that courage?
Anta sahasamu dhairam ekandunchasindi.
Where did he, where she, did she get it?
Alanti dhairam ekandunchamikostindi.
Yes, from the Lord.
Prabhu deganase.
She knows the power of prayer.
Pradhanauna shaktiniguchichi tanak dels.
That she fastened prayed for three days.
Mooorudinamulu ami upavasamud pradanjesi.
And so when she went over, the king allowed her inside and she was able to know and that all you know that.
Mari ami rajuaka, akavna astanamulonipalappudu rajanamatinchinadu veli adantarvatanamik delsu.
Now the question is.
Prashnintante.
How many of you are coming for the church prayer?
Entamandi meelo sangapradanikosthana.
Tell me that.
Chapandi.
How many, one, one hand I am seeing.
Konishtetrali justana.
Please don't, yes, yes, yes.
Entamandi sangapradanikosthana.
Four, five, whatever the others, my dear, my dear sister.
Priya sahodarana ikam, meekavashalain.
I can see some, I can see some men, very good, that's very good. You must come, don't think that only men can come and pray, you also have the responsibility in the church to pray.
Keelamu sahodariluchipradanjastaranakaakunda, meeku gada sangapradaniluchipradijanaki a bhajjata unti.
So decide yourself.
Betchesi tirmaranideskun.
Yesterday decided even to die.
Estertieskunati tirmaramante, chaniipodanugadasitengannan.
There is no question of you dying when you come to the church.
Alanti parasittilaiteninkama nakaraledankundi mandirankostte.
So make up your mind.
Betchesi ilanti tirmaramandieskun.
Here at, in this, in this, coming here.
Raanudinalu tirmaramandieskun mandipelladu.
I will come to the church.
Neenu sangapradanikosthana.
And I have to pray for more things.
Aneka vishalakupradancharali.
Here we have in, in our Patmas Coimbatore.
Patmas pradhanmadan Coimbatralondi.
So we have decided to build, rebuild the church.
Mari sangamunu thirigikattalanani meemu puran, nirmaninjskunam.
So our brother is made like that, what is this says, we, how, somehow, somehow we have to buy, build the church.
Edavikinka mandiramnu kattali anna tirmaramandieskunam.
And what he has said is this.
Anenjapadante.
We have, we won't have a thing that, we will all pray and somehow that, what we, the plan and those things has been approved by the collector. What? No, just trying to get the application.
Varu mari pradinsakunda mari kattadaniki collectordeganansi application vetyaranmati.
That is to build that place or anything, we have to get the permission of the collector.
From collectordeganansi permission ravalani mandira kattavatdankani or vetyar applications.
This is very difficult.
Alichala custom.
So what we say is this.
Meenjapinamati intante.
Only the prayer can do that.
Pradhana ne manaku apanenjseegaladu.
Recently we heard that three people have to approve, that is the, the police people, the corporation people and also the revenue people, they have to approve.
Maaku ipudu kotaga delsnavisindate, muggurudan anamatinchali, mari corporation navara anamatinchali, police shakamunnavari gada tanika anamatiwale, inkokkuru vaavidega muggur anamatistegani katkolayum.
Because of so much prayer, now the police department has given okay.
Mari ento pradhana baharamataravata policevala permissionichar katkodan.
And like that it will come on.
Evenka pradharsahayamchetamanjseegal.
And surely Lord will answer the prayer.
Atapakkunadu devu pradhankjavabistad.
So there is a part for the women also.
Sahodariyaka patra gada ide.
Yes, we had twenty-four hours where you used to have twice in a year.
Savanchanakrundasaralu mari irvinaalagantalu pradhankaligundnavar.
Without intermittent, he started six o'clock in the evening, ended next day six o'clock in the evening.
Madjalom etu anti viramamlekkunna irvinaalagantla, irasayatramu aargantlakaramisther, reppusayatramu aargantlakamukitsavalam.
We saw more women coming and praying.
Ala chesetappudu anekamandi sahodariluchipradijstachusam.
This is what Lord expects from women.
Devudu idi manaidarani korukunchinadu.
Yeah, they are like this, now according to that, that self-sacrificing must be there.
Evenka pradhana tapatu manamu arpiniskunegunamu gada kaligundali.
One, one word I wanted to read.
Inkokka sahodarinjuchupinchalan.
Ephesians chapter five verse two.
Ephes rasnapathrika idu vachayam randu.
Ephesians chapter five verse two.
Ephes rasnapathrika idu randu.
And walk in love as Christ also had loved us and had given himself for us an offering and sacrificed to God for a sweet smelling savior.
Kriissumi unpreemichiparimalavasnagavantakku manakorukutanu taanu devuni karapanamuganu, baliganu, arpiniskuneno, alagunane meerunu preemagaliinatsukunadi.
So it is said, very clearly said, how the Lord, Jesus Christ behaved.
Evidega esukrisupra var apaginchikuntuvachinadu chalaspasangaraivadindi.
He gave himself.
Tanu taanu apaginchikun.
As an offering and sacrifice.
Mari baliganu, arpanamuganu.
For a sweet smelling savior.
Mari paramalavasana gavundan.
Because what, what is the reason for that?
Danikigala karnamanti?
Loved us.
Preemagaliyundan.
With love we have to pray.
Manamu preemagaligi pradanjse.
And we pray like that.
Aviniku pradijstappudu.
Sure, Lord will answer that.
Tappakkunadu devu pradhankjavabistad.
Then one more thing we can say.
Nukavishanchudagalamu.
Hospitality.
Mari athityamuchesevischem.
I don't know how many of you are really hospitable.
Mari naktelidu meelo entamandi athityamuchesegunamugaliyunnaru.
Lot of guests will come.
Chalamandi athithilastavantaru.
In the church also lot of guests will come.
Sangamlo gada chalamandi athithilastavantaru.
In all that, what is your share?
Mari ivit anihtivischemlo neyaka mari patreente.
Are you really hospitable?
Nizamuganu athithyuraligunnava.
They offer yourself for the hospitality.
Iathityamichakaruku neenu arappichkuntunava.
It is expected a woman.
Ilanti strelundalani mari korukunchinadu devu.
If the guest comes.
Evanathithilachinappudu.
You should not murmur.
Manamu sanukku kadavudu.
I have seen children, sisters really murmuring when people come for their home.
Chunandi aneka pariyamlo intiki evanathithilachinappudu sahodil chalamandi sanukunegunukuntavananjusannen.
Yeah, woman must be hospitable.
Okasstree, tapakkunadu athithyamuchesestriikunda.
One of the great qualities of a woman.
Mari strelaluna aneka minagunaganalu idi chalapramukhyamayindi.
In Tamil, in Thirulai he says.
Tamillo okamati vidang japtadu.
Yeah, I will recite in Tamil, Chandravari Mimi, Varubari Yavngan, see, I have all forgotten. What this says is this, you have to honor who will come and expect all the other people, then in according to Thirulai it is said, the people that is who are in heaven really bless you. Yeah, you didn't get, Tamil, English only he said.
Tamil, English always.
No, that's it, suppose you must be like a woman, when who has come, you have to be respectable, hospitable.
Evanana manadekachinappudu intiki athithilachinappudu manavarki gavroinsi athithamivali.
And not only that, you have to expect people also to come.
Antamadraga kona mari intiki evan raavaline asinsalaman.
I don't know how well he is going to.
Nakete delamar entamandi avidega asistadu.
I don't think so, huh?
Nakete.
Am I right?
Avanagada.
Nothing is coming from the, no, coming out of you, hmm? If you are, if you say it's okay, it's okay, but you should say no.
Chalamandi odhandjaptargada.
So who's are coming over, you have to be hospitable.
Evarete manitikostavantaru variki manathithyamival.
Yeah, the man really buys all these things and gives to you.
Mari purushudintloona sahodaru varanidechi manakistavantari intlo.
The home minister has to quick it and give it.
Vaatanihtidieskunipancha visham sahodilaka patra.
So you have to be hospitable.
Athithyamichavaregundali.
One word, second king, chapter four.
Rando rajulandamuna naalgu vachayam.
Second king, chapter four.
Rando rajulandamuna naalgu.
Second king, chapter four.
Rajulandagandamu naalgu vachayam.
Verse eight to ten.
Envidenshi padavatsnali.
Read it.
Okadinamandu Elisha shunemupattanamukupoga acheta ganuralinakasstree, bojanamukarammani atani balavantamuchesinagana kathadu, amarugunavachinappadella, ami intabojanamuchesichvachino, kaga ami tana penimittinichuchi, manayadaku vachichupovsina varu bhaktigala dayavajanadi neenerugudenu, kauna manamathaniki godamina okaschnagadi katintsi, andalo atanikaruku manshamu balla, pita, deepasamamu nunchedumu, athadu manayadaku vachinappadella, andalo basacheyavachinani cheppe.
You know who's a woman?
Ikada raivadna streepeyente.
Her name is not mentioned.
Streepey raivadledu.
But who is that?
Kanee ami evanu?
Pardon?
Sheminsal.
What's saying?
Shunemira.
Yeah, yeah, not, that is, the name is coming because the place where she lives.
Ame nivasinchina pranthani bati ami ka peravachin.
Yes, she is a shunamite.
Shunamite, shunemira.
Yeah, that is, her name we can't say, but she belongs to shunamite.
Ame shunemu stalaniki leka patthanakichedina stree.
So whom did she really service?
Ame yavari ki seva jastavachindi?
Elisha.
Elisa.
You know what is Elisha?
Elisa evan delsa?
Yes, he, he is double part of Elijah.
Eliakunatmalo, randu paalu atmagajinavikti.
So Elisha comes over there.
Ikada Elisa vachibasachesivari.
She watches him.
Astree enchesinante.
The Bible says, "Elisha passed to shunamite, where was a great woman and she concerned him to eat bread."
Akad raivadindi Elisa shunemupattanupoga akad ganuralinastriyam raivadindi.
Two qualities are, great qualities are mentioned.
Istreeki raivadna randu pramakamana gunalaksha.
She was a great woman.
Ganuralinastri.
And concern Elisha to stay with her and eat food.
Balavantamujesinanamata, tana intilonikarammani.
How many times you have done that?
Manam ennisaavaladangijesammo.
If you have done that, well and good.
Okavela cheschintemanshide.
If you have not done that, it is your duty.
Okavela chayakapote idi meekartavyamu bhajjata.
So many Elishas will come.
Anekamandi Elisa lamanitikostavantaru.
If you want the Lord to bless you.
Devu ninno asidvithinchalankunti.
You must be a hospitable one.
Manamu athithyamichavaregundan.
You must be hospitable and you have to take up all the people that are coming over there so that they can be happy and go.
Mari manitikvachivaranandarni manamu variki athithamistu, variki kaavsnellavana juskunappudu manamu iekasstreevala undam.
Not only that, after that you know, she built a room over there, put a court over there, put a light over there, all these things she has done over there.
Antamatramigadu athithyamivadamatramigadu sahodar, devuneka dasinikaruku okagadini katintsinani andalo manshamu, deepamu, balla, anivetavachin.
So it is very essential that you must be a hospitable woman.
Manamu athithyamichesstriga undali anarichala pramukhyamayinari.
So if you all do that.
Ivanniguda merchayakapate.
I have just noted this morning.
Idekaalasamuljusannu.
The Lord really honored some peoples and women.
Devudu nizamga kontamandustrelanu garparustad.
That I just want to mention.
Korni vishalamik chappalanjusna.
Who was at the cross at the last time? When Lord was hanging over there on the cross with three knives? Yeah, lost at the cross, who was there?
Silvadegarachivarike varunnavaru.
Pardon?
Sheminsali.
Mary, Mary Magdalene, yes, only there, nobody else? Then? Then, you have forgotten the important one.
Pramukhyamastriinamarchipar.
What's this? Who's that? Mother of Jesus.
Esutalli.
She, Mary was there.
Mariyakadandi.
What a, what a privilege.
Entagoppa adhikyata.
The Lord's Savior of the whole world.
Sarvalokaaniki rakshakudu.
Is lying there.
Akad chaniipotanappudu.
And she was there.
Astriyakadandi.
That means she is really, really for that salvation of the whole world.
Chunandi vashtavaniki sarvaloka rakshanakarukarna bhuthurainna avanidegarivilunna.
So Lord, Lord has allowed her to come there to stand under the cross over there.
Mari asilvadegariki varvatsi unnadamu devu armatinchinadu.
Now you said on Magdalene.
Akada mirukama stree.
For what she is first?
Mary Magdalene, Magdalene Maria. Arammamlo tana stiti entidi? She poses with seven demons.
That's it, that is before that, but after that I am asking.
Dan taravata.
After the cross.
Silva taravata tanaika patreente.
Lord did a great thing to Magdalene. That's it, that's it. See, she has the real privilege of meeting that one, because why, why?
Endukukarnamintante.
Because Lord showed to her and she said, he called her Mary and immediately he replied, "Rabuni." Why, why?
Esukrisupra varu, ayanichaniipoythirigilesnataravata mottamaditsari, tanu taanu karparchikunadu evan kundi, Magdalene Mariake, indakopadhikata devu astrikitchinadu.
Why did he do that?
Endukuddevu apanjijasa. She loved Jesus more.
Loved, yes, everybody loves him.
Andarku pravampreemichar.
Loved more, yes, let me, that is fifteen percent, this is twenty percent, okay?
She came too early.
Pardon? Yeah, to come early, okay.
Avanu, adigadu.
What is the important thing? What's it?
She came to carry Jesus.
Yeah, that's what she came. Pardon? No, you know that, you know that.
Meek delsu tana maatalu. Endukesukrisupra varu ami ke kanparchikunnavatamadiga karnam.
Why Magdalene was there, only she was there only?
Magdalene Maria okate endukunakadu inkamigitavalenduklearu. Sister was telling she didn't go home, she was there.
Yeah, that's what I am saying, she was there only, why, why she was there? Endukakade. What was the thing that is drove her?
She is sure of resurrection after all.
That is it, that is it. That you must understand.
Adhey manograhinsa.
Yes, you know the apostles.
Apostely manak dels.
They all heard.
Varandaravinna.
From the beginning they heard about it.
Aravamnunche prabhu pulundhadhanaavutadu, lestadu, prabhu jepinamatalu ventuvchar.
In the Matthew chapter sixteen, he was saying that.
Mataisvarta padharajchamla prabhu jappar.
What you are saying?
Prabhimannar.
The Lord has to go to the cross.
Neenu silvakavellali.
They will beat him.
Varanukodtaru.
Crucify him.
Silva vestaru.
He will die.
Chaniipotanu.
And third day he will raise again.
Mootadina thiriglestan.
And they were going on hearing about it.
Iekamatalu ventuvintuvintu aneka pariyamvinna.
But not a single apostle where they when he was resurrected.
Kanee espravuthirigilesnataravata, apundhadhana dinamandu okka apostlevaralid.
Why?
Enduku.
They did not have the faith that Lord will resurrect.
Esukrisupra var thirigileshtadanna viswasmvarikleed.
The power of resurrection, they didn't have it.
Purundhadhavyaka shaktiaka grahimvarikleed.
But Magdalene had it.
Kanee Magdalene Mariaakund.
So she, she had the faith that the Lord will surely come out.
Tappakkunadu espravuthirigileshtadanna viswasmutana kunnadi.
So she was there and Lord gave it.
Andike astriyakadunnaadi prabhutana taanukarparchikunadu.
And thirdly, that who was the first to say about the Lord's proclaim?
Esukrisupra varu gunsi mottamadiga swarthaprakichinasstreeevan.
Who was the first one to proclaim Lord? Pardon? Again she is the one, Matthew chapter twenty-eight, eight.
Mataisvarta iruvanamidi.
The prayer meeting also was there, who was the first one to have the prayer meeting and after Lord has risen?
Esukrisupra var thirigilesnataravata, mottamaditi pradhana chesnavikti leka pradhana kutamunna strelavan.
Pardon? They were in the upper room.
Varupai medagadilunna, varunna strelavan.
Yeah, Mary, yeah, Mary, she has the opportunity to begin her own to prayer on the first time, that's it.
Ayaka modatisari pradhana gumplu, a sahodari unna adhikata tanakunna.
Do you know first convert of the Lord?
Esukrisupra var dvara mottamadika marchabadinasstreeevan.
And the Lord has risen, who is the first convert?
Esukrisupra var thirigilesnataravata, mottamadika mari marchabadinasstreeevan.
She was a woman. No.
Taravata, espravuthirigilesnataravata.
After that, after that, after the resurrection.
Prabhu namukunna astreeevan, leka marchabadinasstree, convertainasstreeevan.
You know that when Paul was going there and he was going into a river, in that river she came over there and she was like that. Uncle who can say, she was a woman of business.
Mari vyaparameshtri, lydia.
Lydia, she is the first convert of that, after resurrection the woman.
Mari strelaluna mottamadiga mari swarthanamai prabhunisveekanichinasstree.
Why I said all these things?
Evaniguda endukjeppanante.
Lord loves women.
Mari strelaku, strelanode devu preemistinadu.
He, she, he wants that the ladies should come, come up as the male.
Mari purushuleevidega mari chesnara, avidega strelugadachayali, ane varini prosaishtinadu.
Actively partake in his, all his work.
Chunandi vashtamari ento chirukuga ayana ka karikarapalopanilo, palupumpalkaligundta.
As we have seen, she, he can be a prophetess.
Chustavachinada, mottamadika pravaktiga gurundagamu.
He can work in the church.
Sangamlo palupumpalkali paricharijegal.
You can be a woman of constancy.
Mari okay panini chakaga chesesstriga undagalu.
Like yesterday, you can sacrifice yourself.
Esteravale, arpiniskunestriga undagalu.
I don't know how far so many people come for sacrificing.
Mari entamandi avidega arpiniskudankisitangadu, nakete deli.
Like the shunamite, you must be hospitable.
Mari shunemiraavale athithyamichesathodarigundan.
And about the people, because of the character, Lord allowed them first to see him.
Evenka varu kaligunna gunaganalabachi, leka Maria kaligunna gunaganabachi, devu mottamadiga tanukarparchikunadu.
What I spoke was very, very little.
Neenu jepinachala, chala krupthamuka, kothi vishalajeppanu.
But you can do more.
Kanee meeru ekavaka seegaladu.
If you just go to the Lord.
Kanee meeru prabhu yadaku velanappudu.
And ask him.
Prabhu nadakundi.
He will surely do that.
Ayana tapakkunadajastad.
Because only those people who ask it, they will get it.
Evarete adutaro varumatraame pondukunta.
Matthew seven, seven says, "Ask, it shall be given."
Matthayaedu raivadu, adugodimikivudun.
People are going on asking, they are long list.
Prajal chalamandi pad, mari chitta vettkunadu.
She has a oven, she has a water cleaner, she has that, so Lord, I want it, that's a, that's a petition.
A sahodaridagaravamari cookerunna, nakavali, akad ovenunna valitlo, adimnakavali, akad cookerunna, avanidu adutavantar pad the list.
And when the husband comes.
Barthintikochinappudu.
You know what we will do.
Meek delsainjyalo.
You home minister already, you know that.
Home minister kavati meek delsainjyalo.
She has it, I don't have it.
Chunandi.
She has it, I don't have it.
A sahodariyundileka varintloni manakledu, nakledu.
It's not, it's not the way.
Adigadu.
So Lord says.
Pravantadu.
You have to go and ask him.
Prabhudegaradu.
What you have to ask?
Emadali?
The qualities which are now meditated.
Ipudu manadhyanichkunai lakshnalu, gunaganalu unna kada, aviadaga.
Ask other Lord to give all this.
Prabhu evanidakavadunadu.
Very, very happy to pour on you.
Devudu meeku ivadaki ento istapadthad.
And Lord will surely give.
Devu tapakkunadjastad.
He likes that woman.
Alanti strelan devu preemishtinadu.
Like Mary and Magdalene and other people.
Ine Mariajusamagdalene, marivandragu gada manaku dhaharanu.
So I wish that you people will be like that.
Meerandragu gada avidegundalanana nakorika.
Maganamayinaku padeva mari ekusari vishalochiri pradistunam. Vaakyamlo strelagunutwanti pradharnyata. Prabhaamiyandaviswasmuchivarecheshina sahasakariyavanugurichio. Varanadchina vidharaavanugurichio. Varu ekavidhayatavana, varu ekapradhana shaktivalana, varu ekadhairamvalana. Devaaleka mahatkariyamalu, vaakyamlo jarayunita likhinchibeter. Vatidvara. Mari ikada cheryvachina sahodarilandaru gada, mari ekusari dhyanichinavare, alanti lakshnalu kaligunadu, prayasupadukavarginairpinsu. Virunamakandarki kaavasna hesrekalupodhi. Vaakyanasaramajevichid devu likurukukariyavanugarichikusahayamchay. Sahaykalavukodekukumalsitavarsu. Alisinadehaavalku kaavasna visnanti dahiayam. Mari ekusari mamalame kubaganashtalukavagichkutu, vadhanathalistu. Prabhanesukrisunavala pradhichid, dhenamastavaidkunsunavam tanrey. Amen. Manaprabhanesukriste ekukrupa, tane yena devuneka prema pasuddhatmaka sahavasam. Maragunusagala pasuddhalagunui pudunu yelapudunu sadhakalamu todainunagaka. Amen.
Praise the Lord.